Yeah, we did it. Okay, well, I'm in charge tonight, so uh I am going to call the June 2025 Library Board of Trustees Meeting into order. I'm gonna be a little less aggressive with the Catholic here. Do we have any visitors this evening?
No, you're presenting. I, I. Well.
Sure. Hello.
Welcome.
Hello, visitor. Welcome.
Do we, do we have a follow-up process to that? Would you like to introduce yourself?
I've been in Littler for five years. I've worked at Spokan a few times, and worked at SEC.
Awesome, cool. Welcome. Thanks for joining us.
I do wanna point out to new folks on our staff, well, they're not new. They've been here a while, but they have new roles, and we're pretty excited about it. We have Jenny Anderson, if you could stand up.
Hi.
Hi.
Jenny, Jenny was the Customer Experience Manager at Indian Trail. Has been elevated to fill one of two roles. Paul, as you know, is retiring, so Jenny's gonna be taking over operations.
Congratulations.
We also have Jordan Hooker here, who you may remember from Shadle Park Library. And Jordan is gonna be taking over our security management. So we're very happy to get her over there.
So that's great. It's more impactful than it normally is. Alright, we'll do the land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional public lands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chiliva Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all of those who share this land. Do we have any changes to the proposed agenda?
No.
No. Who approval of?
Did you not have the meeting last?
Yeah, so it'd be April's minutes.
Okay, April's meeting. Oh yeah, I guess we're in June, okay. Approval of the April 2025 board meeting minutes?
I move that we approve the April 2025 minutes as submitted. Second?
Alright, it's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And alright, so moving on to approval of the April 2025 bills and contributions.
I move that we approve the April 2025 bills and contributions with a sum of $1,258,938.73. Second?
Alright, it's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving into May 2025 bills and contributions.
I move that we approve the May 2025 bill and contributions with a sum of $1,374,143.27. Second?
Yep, thanks Danny for taking all the big numbers. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving into financial report. With Nicole.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. Been a couple months. So for the financial report, so basically just combining April and May for it all. So for library operations, our cash investment trend. So as of the close of May, we have the ability to pay 106 days worth of operating costs in our available cash investment balance. In May, we did receive our levy lift dollars as expected from the Spokane County with the amount of $1,233,636. Bringing our cash investment balance to $5,832,451. The second half of our levy lift will be received in early November, so this will be to our allocation each year. For the expenditure trend for April and May, the operating expenses totaled $1,127,349 and $1,323,692 respectively. Total personnel costs for the two months totaled $1,884,420. May did contain a total of three paid periods to staff. Our interim charges combined were $118,470, which is essentially the highest we've seen to date. City indirect costs were just under $50,000. As a reminder for the indirect costs, that pays for things like city legal department, the city clerk's office, city finance, as well as mayor and council members. Our accounting and office management combined is just under $27,000 for the two months. Both so for, oh, I lost my spot. We paid $24,112 for city IT, which essentially covers software upgrades and licensing of that nature. For unemployment and workers' comp, we paid just under $16,000 for the two months. And then our, the asset fuel ups that we did for our seven fleet vehicles was just under $1,500. For books and materials purchases, both months combined was $157,281. Our utilities costs for both months was $56,834. For our third-party, third-party security guard services, as a reminder, that covers Central, Shadle, Liberty Park, and the Hive. That total was $44,969. We did receive invoicing for our snow removal services throughout the entire season, which just is typically we've seen kind of one invoice per month, but this year they just invoice us all at the very end of the service. Those total charges for snow removal was $30,967. Branches that we do have snow removal at are Indian Trail, Shadle, South Hill, the Hive, and Liberty Park. Uh, let's see. Oh, and we did replace, we did purchase our HVAC filter replacements. Those are pretty specialized that we installed during the bond updates. We purchased about 578 filters in total. Those were supposed to last one year. That was just under $18,000. Any questions on operations before I move to the bond update?
Why was interest fund so high for June? Nope.
For May, yeah, actually. So that had a lot of the second quarter. Our incidents.
Okay.
Um, and um, sometimes the unemployment and uh, sorry, the unemployment and workers' comp, the second quarter charges have not been consistent on each side. And so we saw second quarter for our indirect, our accounting, and that as well. Okay, so so far they haven't fallen on the same line. God, this year, they didn't in the first quarter. And since interest fund is new this year, yeah, that's our highest one. Yeah, it's just a big hit compared to what we usually.
Is it all expected?
Yes.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Any other thoughts, questions? Will you remind me, Nicole, for our snow removal, do we contract out with a company separate from other city facilities, or is it like shared?
We have our own that we work with. It's a company called Keith's Garage. So we use a local ride that we use for a long time. So we try to make quotes every five years to make sure we don't cost prices. And he always comes in, so he's been great to work with. He also does a lot of our people maintenance, like what changes, things of that nature. But he does not, he does not provide those for the city ever. Okay, thank you there. Say it's his money on some of the air funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else for operations, Nicole? Yeah, okay. So for the bond fund update, this is really gonna be my last big one. I'll just kind of, business office updates, update you guys on paper work thing that they, where we will have an audit that can happen as well for data. But this will kind of be the big, the last major one. So for April and May, capital one, project expenses that amounted to $182,41. Of that amount, about $124,000 was for the Nevada construction, and $58,000 was for essentially for rental services and POM. Substantial completion date for the Nevada project was at May 7. Currently, we're in a sort of penalty per day situation. We are having, we're working with them on kind of a checklist of items, those change every day, but it's getting shorter. We're almost there. We're also waiting on inspection. I'll go over that on the next page, though. Yep, so we've got, that's kind of outdated already, I won't even say that. As of early June, we are waiting on that, on that final inspection to take place by the city. And once the inspection does happen, we'll be, we will obtain our certificate of occupancy, and we will be able to begin operations essentially. So here's a project snapshot, essentially, so as of the end of May, we really have about $119,000 left to start to plan our projects overall. That really is the central furniture, that's a routine intermount on the staff break room that we have remodeled and added. And then it's just the construction, essentially, for general. So what remains to wrap, what remains to wrap up the total bond project so we can move on with our lives and be done with this? So again, we've got some punch list items that, those kind of change every day. We did have water back flush, things of that nature on that. Most recently, Terrance worked pretty hard with the integration of the keypad, so the security pad on the doors of the gates, so those are installed. Right, we're currently running the same hotspot, so still waiting to get the city fiber installed. So Terrance also working on getting that set up and what it's looking like. We are waiting on the closeout for this staff central break room project. Again, we've got the free containers still outstanding there. The one penny item is a letter, the letter of approval from the notice of completion that was filed in April 2024. That final letter is from the Department of Revenue, that's what we are currently waiting on. So once final payment is processed with the Alpine Construction for the Nevada site, we do expect to receive final closeout documents. That will include a certificate of substantial completion from a contractor. Once that, once we have all of those things completed, it kind of takes a few months typically after the project is closed. But we'll bring all the necessary documentation back up forward to the board for review. And that's when we will vote on approval of final acceptance. And then following that, we will file a notice of completion with the Washington State Department of Labor and Industries. That'll be, that'll be a great day. Hopefully, it'll be by the end of this year, but we shall do. Once that's done, so yeah, we'll just, once we file that notice of completion, we have to wait for the three letters, again, of them reviewing and approving the closeout. Those letters, again, are the Department of Revenue, Department of Pennine, and the Employment Security Department. Any questions on bond before I do so?
I have a question. So we're not waiting on those to actually go live for the project, no?
Yeah.
No. Do you have a? I fear to ask this question, but do you have a timeframe for completion?
I really don't.
Okay.
Honestly, it should be any day, but it's hard to really gauge it, once you have our punch list items. Yeah, we also have to schedule for the inspector to come and they have to show up. Kind of, hope there's a lot of people at play and a lot of it has to go great.
Okay.
Yeah, totally can be.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on bond, any questions? Copy that. Get my email, it's been coming up. So for business office updates, so we're currently in the process of the mid-biannual budget modification. Four changes are in effect for 2026 process. It is kind of a streamlined deadline again. I did get notification on this schedule change where essentially it was, our modifications were due July 20th, but I did speak with my end of the budget office. Then that's a bit more flexible for library and for parks, because we have our own board and our own process. So we're okay there, we will continue as we're doing, but there's just some different processes underway. Andrew and I do meet with the budget office, it's coming Monday at 9:00 AM. So I'll have some substantial, hopeful, hopefully substantial information as to what we're looking at for next year. And we will be scheduling meetings with the finance.
Subcommittee?
Subcommittee, thank you. A lot of things, things that might hit. So we will get those scheduled this month, so we can kind of go over what we're going to do as far as the budget goes. So county managers, we're kind of working together citywide. We did have a quarterly meeting last week, that the finance, the city finance trust department hosted. So essentially, what we're all doing across the entire city is really streamlining a lot of processes. So the county managers, myself included, got together and identified some tasks such as getting invoices or working on a journal entry, processing budget transfers. Just kind of some of those tasks that we all do, but maybe we do them differently. So we're trying to streamline, make things a little bit more efficient, and then get rid of some of the silos that we have across the city. So that's kind of a fun process that's gonna take probably over the next year. Our next meeting is in the DAS, either July or August, but looking forward to that. Seeing nearly, probably around 100, maybe 70 to 100 accounting people, department heads, all come together, have these conversations, it's just really fun. That's been really fun so far. And then let's see, so our payroll schedules, those are all, those changes are now in effect as of June 8th, everything looks good. City helps us create about five new schedules, so that was really, you know, I really appreciate that with them. It's, it's a lot of work on their end to go through, there's a lot of different people involved. I just wanna give a pretty shout out to everybody, especially CSNs and everybody that worked on that process. I really appreciate it, it was really something. That's it for.
Any other questions for Nicole?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Nicole. Alrighty, I don't have a sort of report. I will say I was able to march in the parade behind the library group, so it was fun getting to be by you all. You had a good turnout, and it's very encouraging that the library, as always, continues to be that safe space for some of our more marginalized community members. So thank you to you all for showing up on Saturday. Looked like a good turnout. Yeah. And I'll hand it over to you.
Alright. I have submitted both the report for May and June. I'll just kind of go over the highlights. We're still in our public survey engagement for Vision 2030, actually wraps up tomorrow. So we'll be combing through those and creating some structure around the comments, some good engagement to the public. We hope that this leads to some clarification, as well as some more questions to ask and engage with, so we can really hone in on what the public's looking for. I was able to go to Toronto, Canada, beginning of June for the Urban Library Council's CEO Roundtable. The reason I wanted to go is because they do this really great framework around how the library serves and publish with social needs. Through their programming, through their staff, through their collections. We're combing through that right now to see how we might apply it to our own Vision 2030. They took, they took the study from, actually from Denmark and the European Union on how they measure the cultural sector and the social impact on the cultural sector. Or the cultural, culture impact, the social impact from the cultural sector. Those were a lot of big words that I just muddled together, and eventually I got them to a place. But it's a, it's a really great document. A lot of the libraries in Canada are starting to adopt this framework as well. And there's a lot of interest from the US libraries as well, going through this process too. So more on that as we become more fortunate, and as we get further along in 2030. I think it'll also be a really great way to communicate the impact of libraries, especially as we'll probably be going out for levy in 2027. Really just talking about the library in a different way, in a way that, you know, the public might help understand. So there's the public engagement, we've done a lot of activity around DDI with the public. Asian American and Native American, it's Island Heritage Month, had some really great events. We also worked in collaboration, spoke to Pride and Justice Exhibit on the third floor at Central. It's a Pride history and remember it's a project, really great exhibit with lots of local archives and artifacts that I encourage you to check out. As far as collections go, much like our MAC and Mobius passes, folks can now check out tickets to soccer games, which is awesome, really great experience for the community. We're also partnering with them, some of the incredible as well, for the community, so that's really great. In other news, we are working through what to do for next steps for our Gail database package. That was partially funded through the state library and through the IMLS cuts. They're no longer able to provide that, so we're working in the matter to see what we can provide to the public. It's a, it's a fairly significant for us for the collection, so we're looking to do that right now. In other news, for the facilities, Thrive did begin construction on their part of the Nevada property. There was a groundbreaking ceremony there on May 22nd, really well attended, lots of good families around the project as well. The community, the local neighborhood community is really excited about the library presence there, and really eager to use, you know, what we have up as well as that community group that would eventually be part of the space. We did start our new hours last week, those seem to go pretty well. Couple of folks that, you know, we've got public comment, not public public here, but feedback through email and such that, you know, that they're gonna miss the main hours. But once we explain what we did, it's not a decrease in hours, it's just a shift that people seem to understand. As far as staff goes, I want to congratulate Eva Silverstone for being recognized as a New Britain Shaker by Library Journal. The program you're gonna hear about tonight, so it's very timely winning, Eva, it's great coordination. Our star spotlight for April went to Colin Stewart. He did a lot of the technical work in bringing up the visual exhibit around the Trent Alley exhibit. I'll make this to him for that. And for May, that spotlight went to Jordan Markin and Charlotte Shields for really smoothing out a question that someone has been wondering about for 50 years. And that's why there is a full-size ski jump on the edge of the bluff, on the edge of the bluff above the valley. So they were able to figure that out for him and took the time to write in his text. We're currently rolling out follow-up questions on our employee engagement survey. Sam's gonna be going over those initial results from the big survey later on this evening. Let's see here, Nicole already went over the city of Spokane budget process, and we are eager to get more information and see what the outlook might look like for this year. Any questions for me?
Has there been any conversation at the state level, or are potentially looking at more private foundations to cultural humanities sector for filling some of those costs?
So not at the state level, but at the state humanities, Washington level, they're really looking at different funding avenues. The Mellon Foundation was able to step in and put a Band-Aid on a lot of the funding for states nationwide. And really, those dollars first went to the state's organizations that really couldn't even operate without another company, because they were really just relying on the NIH dollars. Our state is in actually pretty good standing. They're able to hold up operations at least until October. They are burlowing some of the staff, but they're keeping operations, knowing that they're looking at more climate interventions and things like that. And as well as talking to the state for the mid-year budget adjustment that we have next year. See, and I'll be on a call with Bomb Dartner in the next week or so to talk about the federal aspects of it as well. So it's a forever-changing landscape as we move on.
Any other questions, Eric? I don't believe customer advocacy is.
She's not.
I would imagine you might have got some good reports out, so we'll get more next month. Alright, Minda, you're up.
Okay. So I have both the June and May report for you here, but I'll mostly focus on the June. A few big announcements took place over the last two months. We announced our new partnership with the Chopper League, where we added separate and velocity tickets to our museum passes program. Those have been extremely popular, they booked up right away. So if you haven't been able to get them and you're interested, they, they'll be available 60 days out from the next game. So you just kind of have to look at the calendar, 60 days out, log in first thing in the morning probably, and get those tickets. But those are cool, you get four passes and an on-field experience with that, so. As you know, we officially implemented the hours change, and I included in, on your stock there, new bookmarks and also the new Get Another Library virtual. So as part of the hours change, not only did we communicate all of the hours changes to the community in advance to prepare everyone, but it also required all of our collateral being updated. And a lot of it was outdated anyways, it was a great opportunity to assess what collateral that we had, eliminate some of the collateral that we didn't think we needed anymore, and kind of consolidated it into this one brochure that really is an overview of everything, not everything, but a lot of the things we have to learn, the basics. And it does have the updated hours on it, and then the bookmark as well has the hours on it. And then we also worked with designer Decal, our Decal vendor, to update the signage on every single building. Guyler did a great job coordinating that on the day of the hours change, so there was no, when I arrived on Monday morning, the decals were already done at the Central Library. Like, they were on top of it, they updated that, and then we also used that opportunity to update the kind of wool signage that's on the doors, so making them all consistent for served animals, the weapons law, and also no smoking. So all of that was able to kind of get taken care of in one fell swoop, so that was really great. As Andrew mentioned, we attended the Thrive International groundbreaking at the Nevada property, and the marketing component of that also is that the, the wrap is completed now on the kiosk there. So if you drive by that property, you can see the beautiful wrap that was designed by a local artist, Danielle Davis, and she did a great job on all of the kiosk wraps, and that was the last one to be completed. We wrapped up the My Library and My Story campaign on May 31st, and I have stats for you on that, and I'm gonna hand that over to Alina just for a second at the end of my report for her to go over that with you. And we had a great month of media mentions in May. We had 19 media mentions, a lot of great things going on from the Vietnam Win event, we had several stories on that, Dean Best, summer reading, of course, the Moonburn Shaker article in the Library of Journal, worm composting, and poetry salon, and more. Just a lot of really cool things going on, and the media really picking up on that. Our most visited webpages in the past month were the Share Your Library Story, that was the My Library and My Story. the My Library and My Story campaign, and also the Chopper Passes story that had a blog post that people visited to find out more information. And our social media engagement was pretty great in May, but it actually looks like it went down because the month before was even better. So that's the thing, sometimes you can have a really good month, but it actually looked not as good because the month before was even better. So in April, our top posts were about the Seed Library and the library thing, and we had 105,000 people look at our Seed Library post, which is like probably one of our, going to be one of our top posts for the entire year. So then when we posted about Chopper tickets, then 26,000 people looked at it, which is still a lot of people. It was still a negative 61% month-over-month of engagement. So sometimes it pays to not be a member of your tribe. Okay, so that is it for my report, but let me hand it over to Alina to talk about My Library, My Story.
So the, in general though, from March through May, engagement on Instagram and Facebook just was incredible. 290% ace, 2% increase in Instagram. And then things too that we, was part of our goal, is to increase the number of converted cardholders. So what does that mean? That means that people who initiate getting a card online actually come in and get their physical permanent library card. That's what a converted library cardholder is. So we really wanted to increase the number of converted cardholders by a certain percentage, and we surpassed that plenty. Our goal was in the 2000s, lower 2000s, and we ended up getting 2,800, so 2,800. So we had a 38% increase in converted cardholders compared to the 90 days prior. And then we also, one of the cool things we worked on that kind of reflects the idea behind what Skylar and the Youth Services team have been doing for youth, for Summer Reading, is partnering with a whole bunch of local organizations to help share their library story. So similar to how Spokane or Summer Reading partners with people for prizes and to help get the word out, we partnered with people to really share about the importance of books and libraries to their story, whether that be professionally, personally. And we had 19 local organizations or influencers participate in that and share on social media. So that really took place in March, which was such a wonderful thing to see. We saw so many amazing stories and it was so inspirational. And then, of course, you can see some of the other ones too, but the last one I wanted to point out is we had a goal of getting 15 story submissions on the blog post and we got 66. So we definitely, we had no idea what to think of when it came to how many comments we thought we could get. And, you know, that's not normally where people are engaging with us, so we thought, well, we'll turn on the comments for this post, see what we get, and we ended up getting 66. And these stories can then be shared kind of as evergreen marketing and library content too, to continue to share these live testimonials for people about what the library means to them. So overall, it was such an awesome campaign and we're really excited with the results.
If you haven't had a chance, go to the website and read, all of those are public, so you can go in and read the stories and they're really heartwarming. And that's been what's so, been so rewarding to me for this campaign is not just the efficacy of meeting our goals, but reading really heartwarming stories about what the library means to people is really affirming for all the work that we did.
Are we gonna be, since there's so many stories that came in, are we gonna be sharing them over the course of time, sort of highlighting certain ones?
You know, one of that, we actually have gotten that question too, and another question was should we archive the stories too, so that people can read them throughout time? And I think there isn't an exact answer I have for you at this point, but yes, I'm sure we'll share them. We just don't have a strategy for how we're going to quite yet.
Yeah, same as shame to lose them.
We won't lose them. We'll keep, they will be forever in our care. But just a matter of when we're gonna use them, because they are so evergreen.
Right.
Yeah.
The reminder for folks when we're up for the levy again.
That's right.
Yeah. You said it, not me. What is the difference with the earned media? Like, what does that mean?
Earned media is free media. So that is like if we send out a press release to local news stations or, it's like if a paper or a news station covers you, that's a piece of earned media.
Without us paying for it like ever?
Yeah.
Paying would be all of our energy.
Yeah.
What's the average open rate on like emails and messages? Because 35% seems really high.
It is very high. So industry average is 21%. We average, we just filtered our email list, so I would say we average now about 25% on our general email that we send out to all patrons, which is like over 200,000 people. So we, that gets opened about 20, that's 25% is our average. But for youth and teen where it's more segmented, that's, it's like 50, 40, 50%. So it's, it just depends, but in general, 25% for the general public one.
Awesome. Well, as Amanda pointed out, you all are just very good at your jobs. All right, Jason, you're up with the programming.
Yeah, it's gonna be different when I'm only giving you April's program. It'll be two more months. April was another big month for programming. Over 7,000 people came to all of our programs around the world. Minecraft block party that the youth team put on, huge hit, 430 people showing up to that. Great. The spring plant swap, probably around 1,300 people. A lot of people came to that. We had a really successful live, we partnered with Neighborhood Services on that. This is the 25th anniversary, 2025.
25th, yeah.
So there was a big scavenger hunt sort of thing with all the neighborhood councils had presence there. A lot of people come to that, centered around neighborhoods. Mayor Brown was on there talking about the neighborhoods. The artist created the scene was there. It was a real, real fun night. We also partnered with KSPS again on one of their Indy Lens documentary screenings. We had a funk, it was a, We Want the Funk, I believe is the name of the documentary, but we also had a concert right after that, so 122 people came to that documentary and concert. That was a pretty big success, considering three people came to the previous one's documentary and zero to the one before that, so it was a big one. We wrapped up that series last month with the documentary on libraries, for all, Denise and Mason did a discussion panel. Libraries did a really great job. We had Washington ID event, the Free ID event, people, about 187 people. We have another one of those, the last one scheduled tomorrow at Central Library. That's a number of people, seriously, almost as many can come in and greet Washington ID or the other services. Hopefully, they find funding for that moving forward. Probably last, their funding ran out in this one, so they're extra shingles. Spokane, our site is by far the most successful site. We do them all over the state, but we're 20 times more than anybody else as far as how many activities we have, so we're all gonna keep track of that. We had all, we have the Pride exhibit up on the third floor at Central, and we did their all month. We had a really great kickoff event for that on June 1st. 150 plus people came to kick off that event. We also, as mentioned, had Vietnam Win, Folks Pride, Women Author at the library in May. Hundreds of people came and hundreds more have viewed it online and streamed, so it was a very successful program. That was a partnership with ACL, Asians for Collective Innovation. We partnered with a lot in May for Washington programming. We got Seed Fest last month. Five, 500 people showed up for that. Poetry Salon, a lot going on. You'll hear more about those ones. Any questions?
Thanks, Jason. All right, moving into new business. Sam, it looks like you're up first with policy formatting updates.
Yeah, so from the exciting world of programming to formatting policies. Here we go. So this year, our administration initiative to review and update our SPL policies is in process. We, so first piece of that is we, Amanda came up with a template to update the format itself, just to update and freshen the look of the policy. It includes our new logo, which has our brand color and fonts, a header and a footer, and took out some of the numbering systems that we don't really use or understand anymore at this time. And so the intent is to make the policy clear and consistent moving forward, so as we update the policy, it will also be reformatting. So with that, three of our most recently updated policies, I have changed the format to the new one. So not exactly sure how to go about this, but the first one is the volunteering at the library, in which I did formatting changes formally. And so you'll see that with the new header, using some of our colors. There's no more numbering system, just bullet points. And then the revision dates and the board adopted dates in the footer now, so it's a little bit more clear. The second one was the meeting room use policy, which you could see is on our color poll, which is cool. The only changes in that were the formatting, as well as Liberty Park M1 capacity change. So the seated capacity previously had the same amount as the standing capacity, so we changed it to be correct. And then the third one was the social media policy, which we updated already, so we just did a formatting update for that one. Any questions on our new format? I'll give those over.
We just reviewed social media and the meeting rooms at meetings this year too, right?
Yeah.
And it is good.
So we're looking at approving new formatting on all three and then the one change on
On the fee, on the capacity, the capacity, yeah.
And it's just so we have that consistency.
Yep. Can we do this as one motion or is it?
How would we do it? One by one?
Yes. So we'll start with the policy on the meeting room use. Here's the motion.
I move to approve the updates to the volunteering at the library sort of policy.
Good move in second round, favor. And I skipped over, I think I have, do I have due dates in mind? I don't know what's happening. So Danny approved the volunteering, so then the next one is meeting reviews.
I move to approve the meeting room use formatting changes and capacity changes to the policy.
Second. All right, good move in second round, all those in favor? Hi. And then lastly, the social media policy.
I move to approve the social media policy formatting changes in the Spokane library policies.
Second. All right, move in second round, all those in favor? Hi. Great, thanks, Sam.
Thanks.
All right, now update to resident and non-resident library card policy. Paris, over to you.
This policy is a pretty old one, so it went through some greater revisions than the ones that Sam just talked about. Mostly it was in simplifying language and the same with formatting, but there were a couple substantial updates that we did to that, one of which was expanded criteria for free library card access. So we're looking at including members of the Spokane Tribe of Indians as residents as far as library card access is concerned. That is to keep in line with our DEI values and to try to get us in line with our land acknowledgement. We clarified partner and reciprocal access borrowing in this one, so it just shows in the policy that we can enter into agreements with other organizations and entities in order to create library cards, and we can enter into relationships with other libraries to create reciprocal borrowing relationships. And lastly, oh, not lastly, there, I added a bit in there about digital access services. This is just kind of looking to the future a little bit. We're seeing a lot of changes in the realm of digital access in terms of how much they cost. So for some customers who get library cards with us in order to access our digital resources, we're just looking to a future where it's possible that we might have to charge them more for that. We're not currently doing that, but we're just kind of trying to set the stage so that if that becomes a reality, we're able to adapt. And lastly, it clarifies what the fee structure is for non-residents that the board approves and what it's based on in terms of per capita amounts and costs of services and things like that. And so we are requesting that you approve these changes to the policy on residents and non-residents.
What is the non-resident's cap benefit?
I should ask that. They pay all, do you know?
Actually, $43.
Forty-three.
Forty-two.
Forty-two dollars.
That's so low.
We don't pay them.
Yes. My hometown, it was $25.
It's over $25.
Yeah.
Per year.
Yes.
Nicole has the exact answer.
We also offer monthly, you know, the $3 incentive.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right. We actually, we work with the University College. They go one month every year and they get now like six or eight non-resident ones, so they can operate as part of the class.
Yeah, how many non-residents have, do you guys know? How many non-residents, library house holders?
I guess you have information, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Oh, oops, I forgot, I'm straightened.
I would say I think what I'd see on average to a month is probably between 10 and 10 a month. Any other questions for Paris?
I will note, we did engage with all of staff on these policies as well, just to make sure we're not missing anything or, you know, just to be really thorough.
Is there already ongoing outreach to this Spokane Tribe about this?
We are, it's an ongoing process. I mean, we're always trying to work with them, trying to expand access.
We've worked with them on the naming of the PLO.
Yeah.
And, you know, opening up the college, so, but yes, we do have ongoing.
And specifically on the library card?
Not on the library card yet.
Okay. I guess, have we asked them if they want? I could admit I have some hesitancy about it, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to put it on the shelf and engage with them and ask if they want that before it's been investigated, I don't sense.
That would be my suggestion to do this. So we'll hold until our next meeting, hopefully there's a chance to engage with Spokane Tribe. I think that's a very important one. All right.
Yeah, I have one more question for the non-residents. Is there age, like, I'm thinking specifically of like maybe they're a non-resident, have they're older or like a child, like is there any age?
No, there's no age distinction of non-resident.
Okay. I'm just thinking in like regards to fees. This might be something to think about.
All right, so we'll revisit resident and non-resident policy at our next meeting. And we'll hand it over to Tara for the technology and internet use policy.
So this one is, you see, it did go through the process that Andrew was talking about. We did the thought exchange, got it out to staff for comments. It really is updating and adding now that we have self-service technology in all of the rooms and study rooms, meeting rooms, it's adding that in there, the media studios, and just kind of simplifying the language and puts out what your options are and what you're responsible for.
and just kind of simplifying the language and puts out what your options are and what you're responsible for.
This is probably in the weeds, but for future reference, I think it would be less than missing it. It would be helpful to see what changed, what it looked like before. What that was the first...
It is in there.
That is the first one, okay. Uh-huh, thank you. Yeah, so policy...
So the one you're living for.
Got it, thank you. Okay.
There's a lot of...
I just blared a question.
I didn't say it's growing.
Like, wait a second. I know, I was like, where's the color?
Any questions for Tara on the technology and internet use?
I was also really happy to be able to get into this that we haven't had before, our environmental commitments, on how we recycle, how we purchase is a driving factor for the department. And it also is a nice way to keep the department accountable going forward.
The motion to approve, we're still reading through.
Yeah, I moved to approve the updated technology internet policy section of the Spokane library policy.
Second. All right, good move consecutive, all those in favor? Aye. All righty, thanks, Tara.
Thank you.
All right, and then we now have our community technology firewall software purchase. With Nicole.
I know, it's so exciting.
Yeah.
That's exciting. Okay, so Tara's a lovely team for community technology. Historically, has been implementing a firewall software and licensing for our entire network and for our servers, which are separate from cities, evaporate our own. It's called FortiGate software licensing essentially, and it enables, so is to enable and manage the whole function and the full functionality, security features, and ongoing support for FortiGate firewall licenses. The licensing ensures that organizations have access to this update, services, and protections. Obviously, those are hot item right now, constant updates on how they are going to be. Over the FortiGate equipment has been assembled in a piecemeal fashion. The new devices added at different times, so really kind of the renewal timeline was a little bit choppy and all over the place. So the approach created a fragmented licensing structure. It was difficult to manage that effectively. To streamline operations, we've been strategically staggering the renewal term because of implementing a new, uh, devices. So the existing licenses with the goal of aligning everything with the FortiGate equipment on the same renewal schedule. So that's what we're trying to do going forward, starting now. So we've previously leveraged e-rate funding, that's through USAC. The e-rate funding essentially creates a discount for libraries and schools to have a pay cheaper price when it comes to internet and also for purchasing of this nature. The terms and the rates are a little bit different compared to the two. Obviously, going forward, that's not a viable option currently with some of the things going on elsewhere in the country. So the licensing costs we are seeing an increase compared to what we've had in the past. So now that the FortiGate licenses have been synchronized to a unified renewal schedule, simplified management, reducing administrative overhead and ensuring a more flexible budgeting process. Here are the five, sorry, this is four to five-year licensure term, beginning... Let's see, what code does start date on that, then? Okay, so our code date is May 13th, sorry. So we did have three responses from CDWG, from Blue Ally, and from Custody. We did purchase this from Custody in the past. So when that was about five years ago, our annual price was about twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-six hundred dollars per year. This is kind of what it came out to. So now we don't have that e-rate option currently at the moment. So we're looking at our lowest option, the CDWG, was the winner, the annual price at nine thousand four seventy-four thirty. For a five-year license, that's forty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars, they only have cents. I would also like to point out that CDWG is part of a Washington state cooperative purchasing agreement. So they do have a state contract that, where any government agency is able to use those contracts without a penalty. We still like to do both to ensure that you're getting the best price. But it does guarantee that they either have a very minimal, if not zero, or less than commercial rate markup on what they're selling us. So I would like to open for any questions for Tara to answer.
So I, I have a question, which is, it says that the Spokane Library would be the purchaser, but delivery would be to the county. Are we in a joint?
There's nothing with like county.
It says shipping address, Spokane County Library. Is that just a mistake in the document?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see, on the actual...
Yeah.
Yeah, it is not county, but the Joseph Deloitte is the correct person. Okay, for our town.
I was just wondering if we're doing it together.
Yeah, they have an old town.
Yeah, they do have an old, remember, and prior, prior agency, yes, thank you.
He has contested.
Yeah. All that app. Thank you.
Is the offerings from each of those three companies the same, and that they're just...
Same service, yeah. That's how we have to do all of our quotes, they're very, very unanimous.
Okay.
And is the software specific to library systems, or is it a general...
It's general, it's to the FortiGate systems, which is our firewall that protect us.
So I'm just wondering if they work with other government groups, if there's opportunity to potentially, and if this isn't like an immediate solution, but in the future, to talk with city or any other groups about getting a...
City uses it.
Lower cost.
CDWG definitely works with other government users.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just a question in terms of, because things move so quickly in terms of online security, is there any concern about entering into a five-year contract? It seems like a long time in the world.
So what this does is it gives us that five years of all the renewals and all the updates and all the patches. So it gives us that security to go forward for five years of having everything covered.
Okay.
If not, something gets upgraded and a patch gets opened, people find it, they're aware that the hackers are out there. If we don't have this, we don't have the means to update and fix that.
Yeah, okay.
It's a need.
Yeah.
And I will, I will like to point out too, five-year in this current economy is great because it blocks in our, our prices for that amount of time.
It just seems like such a significant increase from our last five years.
It is, it is, yes. But we've also practically doubled the amount of licenses because of the long purchase.
Do you anticipate at all, as the city continues to add services to charge us for, that they will, because right now, technology is completely separate, like the library and the city. Is there any inclination that there would be, that they would begin to try and streamline all of that? Are they able to streamline that a bit?
No.
Too big a problem.
Not this one.
You don't know what you're giving to.
Thank you. Yeah, I will catch, we'll catch it and we'll get on.
Yeah, but, okay.
Cool. All right. Cool. Where is my motion?
I'll do it again, you guys. I make a motion to approve the library's contingent's five-year term agreement for firewall software and licensure with CDWG. And the amount not to exceed four forty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Second. All right, we have motion second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you for your work on that. Yeah. And last, on our list of action items, we have Sam again for library closure for annual staff day.
Yeah, so we chose a date for our annual staff day. It's Wednesday, September 24th. Our regular hours on that day are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Staff fully closed, first staff to attend the annual staff day, which we've had for education, Andrew's State of the Union, annual staff rewards and recognition, and whatever else we have that we're able to do. So just requesting approval for closure on Wednesday, September 24th. Is this what staff day was last year, in September?
Different day, we did it in October last year.
Okay.
Your motion?
Uh-huh. Okay. The motion that we approve the library closure on Wednesday, September 24th, for the entire day.
All right, good move consecutive, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, staff engagement survey results.
Wow, so neat. All right, so our 2025 staff engagement survey was conducted this year from March 10th through the 20th. Obviously, we're a month behind and recording after you. This year, we utilized our purchase of the Thought Exchange platform rather than Survey Monkey, which has been in the past. Of a hundred and forty-four staff members, one hundred and eleven completed the survey, and a hundred consistently answered the questions, so there was an option to skip if you wanted to do. Each question consisted of the normal strongly agree to strongly disagree options, and this year, we added neutral as an option as well. We did change up the questions last year and the format a little bit, and so we did that again this year. So a couple other things, we, we used to have a comment section after each question, and this time, we grouped the questions into themed sections. So we have motivation, pride, and commitment, alignment and connection, leadership, resources, development, library confidence, and library safety. And then after each group, people were able to leave a comment, so a little more structure in that way. Our highest score this year was, I am proud to work for the library, which was really great. To see was a, we had sixty-seven percent was strongly agreed, and twenty-seven percent agreed. Three percent were neutral, whatever that means. And, yeah, so we're happy to see that as a celebration. For a second year, we would also like to acknowledge that our managers have such a commitment to their teams. We receive higher scores in the areas of support after incident, encouragement to learning, and interest in staff development, and providing opportunities for that growth. So those are, those have been some higher scores, and we want to celebrate that our managers are really fostering that environment for staff. A couple areas where we have been consistently strong. I feel free to use my judgment to serve our customers. And you can see a couple tables in here. Charis was very kind to help me with some year-over-year data. So you can see that from 2019 to 2025, the alignment positive has been pretty consistent in that area. Also, someone in management has shown genuine interest in my development. And then I have access to training, learning, and development, and professional development, which has been consistently like in the ninety percentile. Then our areas for improvement. The lowest score that we got this year, which was forty-eight percent favorability, was workplace policies and procedures are consistently applied across the organization. So one of our first steps since this report was created was that I sent out a thought exchange to dive deeper into that policy, which I'll get into, that low score, which I'll get into in a minute. The second one was the library effectively directs resources, funding people, and effort towards library goals, which was only a sixty-three percent favorability. And then I feel safe and secure at work was another low score. So as a result of some of those lower scores, we want to dive deeper. The first thought exchange we sent out was asking a little deeper question as to what policies and procedures people are referring to when they're saying these are applied consistently. Our second one will be around communication channels and providing the why behind decisions. And the third one will be transparency around career ladders. So those will be deeper dives that we asked on for more actionable items for throughout the rest of this year. And kind of continue that feedback chain, which we have been implementing with our policy updates as well.
Do you happen to know which questions were like consistently skipped? Is that a curiosity, I don't know if you're able to?
Yeah, I don't know that, but that would be good to look at, yeah. I think you can filter that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sam? When you say deeper dive, what does that bring? You're going to like send out another survey?
Yeah, so we have, well, asked an open-ended question via thought exchange, so people can provide their thoughts. And so, yeah, our first one was around specifically what policies and procedures are not applied consistently. That way, we can get more actionable items, yeah.
And are people able to respond to that? If they care to.
It is a not...
Oh, it's all...
Unless I said it to be otherwise. Or unless they give themselves away.
And it says the safety containment facilities were under representation. How I'd ask to why that is?
Those two departments typically don't spend a lot of time on their computers checking their emails, looking at the surveys. So one of my goals for next year is to have more face-to-face interaction and engage those departments a little bit more.
I assume that was why.
Yeah, I just care.
All right, thanks, Sam. Now Denise and Skylar for summer reading club.
Oh, my gosh. We're gonna stand. We're gonna stand. Feels different. Yeah. Because we're introducing a funner topic that's about one point seven minutes. We're making... Now that June is here, summer reading is also here today. It was the last day of school, which is really exciting for today's youth. So this is one of our favorite presentations every year because we get to talk about some of the exciting changes that we implement during the summer months. Between June and August, we do summer reading club where we, yes, thank you. Where we encourage the community, I don't know why it looks like that.
I think it's, I think it's when you down, like when I downed it.
That is a problem, but that's okay. Where we encourage the community to read over the course of the summer, to stay engaged with reading. And where last year, we actually extended this exact challenge to get open to adults as well, so we get the whole community involved and not just kids and teens. Now it's fun for the whole family and everybody can read together. So we're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive, deeper dive, can you just stay back for a second, please?
Yep.
Into the summer reading club this year. So you track your reading through Beanstack. Each month, you record fifteen days of reading, any amount of time, doesn't even matter. Could be five minutes, could be reading an email, we don't know. But you can easily track all of this at spokanelibrary.beansstack.org. Every month, there are different prizes, and all you have to do is just read fifteen days monthly. So this is kind of what Beanstack looks like, this is what the adult challenge looks like, and you get to read for badges as well. We have a variety of different activities represented that are also included in these magazines. We'll cover that at the end of this presentation. For some of the prizes this year, specifically for kids, we have for June, one free book, courtesy of the Friends Del Library, when you read your fifteen days between June 1st and the end of June. In July, we partnered with Velocity and Zephyr to do one free youth ticket with the purchase of a discounted adult ticket. So when kids and teens read their fifteen days, they can come into the library branch, pick up the discounted ticket, and then they can do all that online. And then in their cart, they will receive a free youth pass. So adults and child must go together, but great deal. And then in August, we have partnered with a few different ice cream shops to provide a free ice cream treat. In addition to this, as of this meeting, we actually also have free fare tickets as well. The fare came back to us and was like, hey, do you want some free fare tickets? And we were like, yeah. So we're currently figuring out where to put that in the spread this year, but that is what we have going on. For babies, that's okay. We have some prizes left over from last year. The bibs, they're down here because that was the more impactful. Bibs, bowls, and beach balls, and books, of course. We also have a few art supplies in lieu of some of these prizes in case kids and teens don't want to go to the soccer game or if they don't want an ice cream, or if they don't want a book.
The prizes for babies, is that of adults reading to babies?
Yes. The babies cannot read.
Your babies have to.
I would be very impressed, but yes. So we wanted to thank some of our youth and teen summer reading club sponsors. That would be the Friends of the Library, Spokane, Zephyr, and Velocity, Baskin Robbins, Ben &amp; Jerry's, Dairy Queen, and now the Spokane County Interstate Fair, who is not represented in this list. For adults, so as I just said, last year, we introduced adult prizes. So adults can read 15 days each month. And instead of the youth prizes that you saw, adults will get one free book coupon from page 42 every month in addition to one entry into our grand prize, Sweet States Drive. These are some of the amazing prizes represented. So that includes Turkey Tail Tattoo, Manitowoc Tap House, a $50 gift card to Spokane Parks and Recreation, Board and Rush Workshops, a Wanderlust Delicato gift card, Spisology gift sets, another tattoo artist represented, Spokane Comedy Club, the Symphony, Jupiter's Eye, the YMCA, and Sang's Asian Barbecue, in addition to probably a few more. I have still continued to receive more interested donations. So we might see more in addition to all of these, but we are extremely grateful for their participation. So I wanted to introduce.
Wow, okay. My mother, my name is so cool. It's okay. I love transferring reasons. Okay. So I wanted to be introduced to our youth services team. Far left there, we have Lauren. Lauren is our early learning specialist. And then we have Gina, who is our teen specialist. And me, youth services manager. And then Mason is in the back there, and Mason is our environmental specialist. And Melissa is our art specialist, and Kathy is our spec specialist. And these are the people that have been working so hard creating the summer reading programs. And all that since January, we start, December, January, started as a plan for summer. Oh, I also want to point out Skylar.
Skylar R.
Skylar.
And Stu Mi.
Skylar, we are so very appreciative of all the hard work that she does for the youth services team. And she's amazing in marketing, promotions, flyers, things at the last minute. She's just wonderful, superstar. And Stu Mi, we're so appreciative of. Stu Mi does a wonderful job with our collection in support services. But I still consider her a youth services. She's been in youth services a long time, and she does our storytimes at Central on Fridays. And she works really hard at the middle schools with their collections as well. So super appreciative. This year, we are super excited for our special presenters. We are working with the Inspiration Dance Studio, and they're doing six different classes for kids and teens, so three for each age group. They'll be doing jazz hip-hop and ballet lyrical, musical theater, and cheer. And they're offering it one dance class at each of our branches this summer in August. And so we're just very grateful for that partnership. We really want to have kids and teens have that experience and be able to do dance. You know, dance can be very expensive. So we're happy to provide them to have that. Then we have Cecil the Magician, and he's going to be at Indian Trail South Pole and Hillard in July. So fun. And the reptile man is in the left corner. And he will be bringing all his awesome little creatures and friends to Shadle, Central, and Liberty Park this month. So very, very soon, like a week, week and a half, he'll be here. So super fun. We have Eddie and Aziza, who we love so much. They're Lego experts that were on the Lego Master Show. And they'll be doing a Lego Build-A-thon at the Hive. And then we get to work with the Science Speaks Spokane group again this year. They're amazing. They're offering a series of experiments, great fun science programs for kids. They'll be working with Kathy at Liberty Park and Shadle. And then I have Beau here, who I got to meet last week. He's so cute. And so Beau, and then Cedar, the Highland cow, and Jack the donkey will be coming with their owner, Honey, who wrote a book about Cedar, the Highland cow. And the book finally was published, and we're so excited. It has beautiful illustrations, and she donated the book to the library to look. And so she's coming to read the story at Shadle Park in August and bring her beautiful little friends with her. And we'll be doing some crafts to go along with that. So that'll be really fun. That's on the Saturday in August. We are doing two camps this year. Colin will be doing coding camp, and these camps are for middle schoolers and high schoolers. So coding camp has been really great. The kids get to make their own video game and learn how the behind the scenes works with that. And then Andy and Brian will be doing our music and video production camp, which will be amazing. They get to make their very own music video. So each of these is about a week and a few hours a day. And it's just a really great experience. I'm glad we get to do these for the kids of our community and the team. So Lauren has been planning our early learning programs. So park storytimes were really popular last year, and we tried it at two of our parks, that Comstock and Hayes. And the families really love it, so we added a couple more. So we're also doing it at Shadle Park this year and Liberty Park, but it's kind of right outside the library. So it is kind of the park, but kind of, you know, just outdoors. So we did have Liberty Park do their very first outdoor storytime this week, and they had 70 people. And people were very excited, so I'm glad we get to offer more outdoor storytimes. We're also doing fandom storytimes, so we're celebrating Peppa Pig and Baby Shark, who's its 10th anniversary, and Llama Llama Red Pyjama. So we're doing very special ones at all of our branches this summer. And then we're having a picture book playdate with dogs, colorful day, with lots of fun stories and songs and stations and crafts. Oh, wow, gosh.
Art.
Friends. Art. So Melissa is doing these awesome art programs this summer at all of our branches. So we're doing the murals, which you'll get to see really cool paintings on some of the windows at our libraries, make it nice and happy in summer. So they're doing that. Also, Melissa is doing print playground, lots of stamps and different rubbings and different ways of making art that maybe you haven't experienced before. And then for the first time, Melissa is doing the Art of Kaluza. So Art of Kaluza is going to be a festival that's going to be at the Central Library for Youth and also the Hive. And it's going to have live demos by artists and also lots of different stations where kids get to test out different types of art at the beginning. So should be really, really good. STEM. Kathy has some really fun STEM programs that are planned. So she's doing the Lego series, lots of different types of Lego challenges. So there's a city build, a castle challenge, space station, disaster island, and wind racers. So those will be at all of the different branches. She's also doing good vibrations, seeing sound, and rockets. There's water-powered rockets and rubber band rockets. So lots of fun space-related programs this summer. Mason will be doing our environmental programs. And they are doing Garden Fest, which will be super fun in partnership with the master master gardeners. And the River Run is going to celebrate the ecology of the Spokane River and talk about like the salmon and different aspects of it. So there's going to be lots of stations celebrating that. And then we'll also be doing a nature quest, where kids will get to be outdoors and use tools and like learn about their surroundings more. And then Gina for the teens. She's going to do lots of escape rooms, art studios, since it's kind of a loosely art-based theme this year. So that'll be really fun. We're doing Rock the Stage. This year, we are inviting teens in 6th through 12th grade to be either a soloist or a duet or in a band, and they get to perform on the stage. So it's going to be a big concert. If you are interested in attending, it should be really fun. And then we're doing some resin art, UV resin art, and then summer boredom. So for four weeks, Gina is going to introduce these really cool board games like Pandemic and Clean Games out of Winter and Problem Logic. She's also doing So You Want to Be a Game Master, so she can teach kids how to be their own DM dungeon master for D and D. So that should be really fun as well. And these are some of our bigger programs that are coming up this summer. This Saturday, we have Family Pride Festival. Super, you know, excited about that. So that's for kids and teens and their families. There are lots of stations of crafts and games and activities. We're doing Bike About in July here at the Hive. We're going to take over the whole parking lot, and we're going to have a little course where kids can bring their bikes and ride around. We also have the Spokane Bicycle Club, bringing little baby striders for the babies to have a little area to ride. And then the Health District is bringing helmets to give out for free to all the kids that attend. And we'll have some snacks, and they'll make their own little license plates for their vehicles. So it'll be really fun. Touch and Track is also happening at the end of this month in partnership with lots of wonderful organizations. And we're really excited to do that. And then in August at Central, we're doing our very first drive-in movie, where kids get to make their cardboard cars and watch it on the big screen and have some popcorn. And we're watching the Pop Patrol movie.
Oh, that's so cute.
Yes, so everything that we cover in this presentation can be found in the Summer Boredom Buster and the Spokane Summersault Teen Magazine and magazine. There is a copy there. There are more copies in the back. There are a variety of fun activities that you can do. These can be for any age. You can fill these out too, but they are a little bit catered to certain ages, just heads up. We did just complete our deliveries to the schools. We went to over 20 schools to deliver boxes of these magazines courtesy of the librarians at each of the schools that we visited. Truly, I'm almost out of all of the magazines after all the deliveries. We had a few people tack them on the end wanting magazines. So many of Spokane's local students already have these in hand, which is great. Or if not, they can get their copy at the library. As of today, we have about 3,600 people registered for the challenge. Most of them are adults. But now that school is out for the summer, I anticipate that more kids and teens will be registering for the challenge as well. And as summer reading events pick up throughout the summer, I anticipate we'll see more registrations as well. You can participate too. I can show you how, and then you can also compete, earn these awesome prizes. But that's the presentation. We're very excited.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? Are we, is the library channeled for those presenters to come?
Yes, we do have a specific budget for presenters for the year. So it's coming out of that. But the Friends of the Library are very full of they've been giving us money for other aspects of the summer reading, like prizes. And then the rest of the prizes are provided as well. So that's really the only people we're paying for, these are presented. And some of them are free, so just depends on the presenter. Some of them just do it, or for our random, or you know, for very low cost. So we just want to help everyone.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Or if you're like, well, you can make your time.
Sometimes they want to.
As someone who's registered, her whole family, thank you for not having me write every single book that I read to my kids. And I can just say, like, you read that day.
Yep.
That is a game changer.
Easy.
Yeah.
Well, thank you both. And last but not least, we have Eva talking about artists in residence programs.
How are you guys? I brought some hive stickers and some hive pens that you're welcome to. And then I brought some samples of art that you have to leave here that were made by artists here. And if you want to look at them, I'll let you pass them down.
Thank you.
Yeah, these are the, those are made on handmade paper that the artists made themselves. So have any of you not been here before? And we're welcoming, Alexi, and I don't think I've met a lot of you, so hi, it's nice to meet you. The Hive, as you can tell, is a non-traditional library. We don't have any books or computers here. We have spaces. And so instead of checking out a book or reserving time on a computer with your library card, you check out this room. And so you can reserve a room in this building with your library card. And so we have three major purposes of this building. The public meeting room space, which here we are, and one of them you can use during our open hours and actually after hours with Kira's help with your library card for free. The Spokane Virtual Learning Program, which is in offices right across the hall. They're part of Spokane Public Schools, so that's the second purpose of this building. And then the third, and my favorite part of this building, is the Artist in Residence Program. And the school district wanted to have a teacher training center. And then they were going to leave it empty when it was not being used for teacher training. And we said, why don't we partner with you and have a building where the general public can use those meeting rooms when they're not being used by teachers? And then we could also build an Artist in Residence Program. I have seen Artist in Residence Programs from other libraries and for many years, and I've always wanted one for Spokane Public Library. My pandemic project was to build the Artist in Residence Program. You didn't move to the other side. Let's see. So my pandemic project was to dream up this Artist in Residence Program. So I spent time contacting other libraries around the nation that have Artist in Residence Programs and asking them what works, what doesn't work, what would you change if you could? And then I also contacted Artist in Residence Programs that are non-library and said what works, what doesn't work, what would you change? And then I also reached out to artists and said, if you could have the studio of your dreams, what would it look like? And so from that, I collected a bunch of things for the next one. And so, and of course, it's cut off because yeah. So I wanted to say yes, not no, at the Hive. And so in, I heard from other libraries and from artists that they've had spaces where they've been told, you can use this space, but you can only use it from 2:00 P.M. to 5:00 P.M., and then you have to clean everything up and put everything away because we're going to have another program in the evening or a storytime in the morning, and so we want it to look nice. You can't use anything that smells because it'll go through our HVAC system and stink up the whole building. Please don't use anything messy because these are nice carpets. We don't want to get anything on our carpets. And so there were a lot of yes, but at other Artist in Residence Programs. I wanted to just say yes. And so in planning the studios, I said, we really need to have them separately vented to the outside. And so each of the four studios down the hall, and I'm happy to give tours after the meeting, even though this was like the longest board meeting ever, if you want, or another time. Each studio separately vented to the outside. So when one of our artists was a native Alaskan artist who was making leather out of fish skin, and so she was scraping the scales off of the fish skin and processing the fish skin. If I walked into her studio, me, who does not eat fish, I gagged and had a hard time. But you couldn't smell it anywhere else in the building, and it was completely confined. And if she didn't want to have that smell, or there's also a switch with a special air filter. And so it filters the air in the studio if you turn on that switch. So that's really great. We have floor drains in each of the studios, so you can mop right into the floor drain. The floor is cement so that you can spill on it, and it's okay. In fact, people have spilled on it, and they're like, I'm so sorry. And I'm like, no, I love it. Look at the color. It's beautiful. And so like I can see this like blue spot in Studio A, and I'm like, oh, that's green. And I'm like, oh, that's Gwen. And, and then in Studio C, I can see another big splatter of paint. And I'm like, oh, Malia. And so they also don't have to clean up. Nobody goes in their studios except for them, unless they invite someone in or we need to change a filter in the HVAC system. And then in that case, I try to let them know in advance. And if a work person is going to be in the studio, I try to be in the studio with them so that none of the artist's materials get damaged. And I really want the space to be theirs for the entire time they're there. They get 24/7 access to the studio and, which means they can work anytime they want. Because I'm an artist. I do, I work full-time at the library. And so I'm not making art while I'm here at the library. I can make this presentation with weird text boxes. And so I work at home on my dining room table. And, and one of the reasons we need a space for artists is that.
Sorry, my computer's on.
About to die, yeah. When I surveyed a lot of artists, they said, we don't have good places to make art. We make art on our dining room tables, our living room floors, in our garage, in a space that has no heat, no ventilation. And, and so their, their opportunities were limited. And I know from my personal experience, my husband's an artist who, after he graduated from EWU, he moved away from Spokane because he felt like there were not opportunities here. And I heard that story from many, many artists that they moved away to find opportunity. And you're losing some of your brightest, most creative people to bigger cities. And we need to, that's, that's not good for economic development. So let's, let's keep people here, keep them our reason to be here. So here's a little rundown of how many artists we've had in residence since we opened. And when I say artists, I mean all creatives. So they could be boat builders, writers, creative thinkers, painters, quilters. So let's see. We've had 60 artists who have taken part since we started. If you add up the numbers, they don't quite add up. But like, I might say 16 artists, one writer excepted. And 16 is equal, like one of those 16 is Spectrum. And Spectrum has like 20 people who participate in their studio. And so, let's see. Just completed sending out the application, or the acceptance letters to the applications for this year. We had 50 applications. Things have pretty much stayed the same. It's been really successful. In 2023, we added the EWU Emerging Artists Program. And we partnered with Eastern Washington University to reserve one studio for two graduating BFA students. And so instead of competing against all the applicants, they compete against a cohort. And they get a residency and then a faculty mentor to help them during their time here. And, and then I mentor them. One of the beautiful things that happens here is the natural mentoring between artists and, and the networking that happens between artists. So you can go ahead. There's 2021. Those are some of our artists, the very first year. Erin Pringle was here. She's a writer, a local writer. And she, in the six months that she was here, she would come in after she put her son to bed at like 8:30 PM. And then she would write until like 2:30 in the morning and, and then come home. And she completed the entire first draft of a novel while she was here, something that she says usually takes her about a year and a half. And so that concentrated time away from other distractions really allows people to focus. I always say when talking about the art studios that your peripheral vision is X-ray. Because when you're working at home, like if I'm working on a piece of art in my dining room, I can see out of the corner of my eye, the pile of laundry in my bedroom, even though there are two walls in between me. And, and so when you're in the studio, there's nothing saying, hey, hey, you have to do this. And so it's amazing. Sean Brinkman, who was one of our very first artists, he built Salish and Sturgeon Nose Canoes. He built four canoes while he was here. And, and normally he can only build one at a time. But because he had more space, he could have multiple canoes going. And then because of his time here, some people from KSPS happened to be in the building. And they were like, that looks cool. And I told them about Sean. And then they decided to do a Northwest Profile Program. I don't know if you've seen the KSPS Northwest Profiles Programs, but they did a segment on him just because they happened to meet him because he was here and they were here. So all these lovely connections. Go ahead to 2022. These are some of the artists that were here in 2022. Heather was the artist who did the fish skin tanning. She later got a SAGA grant. If you're not familiar with SAGA, it stands for Spokane Arts Grant Awards. And they're put on through Spokane Arts, the organization. And then she came back and did a presentation on fish skin tanning for youth. And then Tamelin, she was here for four months. She, we wanted her to be here longer, but she left. And then two days later, had a baby. So she had to leave early. But she's now teaching at GU part-time, and she's incredible. Jessie Pack decided to go to graduate school because she felt a connection with her artwork and said, you know, I really want to do more of this. So she went off to graduate school. Go on to the next one. And that's some more 20, oh, so Gwen. Let's see. We'll go, we can go a little bit faster. Okay, go ahead and go to the next one. And so the stories, just like other libraries are filled with stories, this building is filled with stories also. So that's Julie on the left. She's a ceramic artist, and she had a six-month residency here. And Spokane Virtual Learning has a special program where kids that have been suspended or even expelled, instead of just being sent home, they come to Spokane Virtual Learning to get some counseling, some homework help, some extra things to, so they don't like fall through the cracks. And so we did a clay workshop, one of her projects. So, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. So you get a free studio. But in exchange for your studio, you have two classes to the public matrimony. And so it's not just like, here you go, free studio. It's a win-win. We get to have their expertise teaching the public. And we pay for the supplies so that they don't have any out-of-pocket expense when they're teaching on our behalf. And so Julie taught a clay workshop to the kids in this special Spokane Virtual Learning Program as part of the give back for her studio time or for having a studio. And I just love that this kid made these beautiful pods. And he felt so good about himself. Because if there's one thing that makes a difference in school is self-confidence. And when you have self-confidence about something that you do, it, it transfers to everything else. And then Julie, halfway through her residency, had a ski accident and had a brain injury. And she stayed with the residency. And she credits the time that she was here with helping her heal from her brain injury. And because the work with the clay was such a drive for her that, and she wanted to do it so much that she was motivated to work on her physical limitations. And from the time right after her injury to the time she left was incredible, the amount of progress that she made. So go ahead, next one. We talked about Sean already. Okay, Lisa Saranaka and Mallory Batista came in with the idea to make a giant public sculpture. If you've driven up Monroe towards Garland, you'll see it on the left. And it was 14 and a half feet wide. And they built the whole thing here at the Hive. And that could not have been built in somebody's garage for somebody's living room or dining room. And, and Mallory, that's actually Mallory's sister, twin sister, learned the mosaic technique from Lisa while she was here. Now Mallory has gotten another opportunity with the city. And the Sister City Organization, she got a, a project, and she created this incredible bench. And it's going to be unveiled in Riverfront Park this weekend, Saturday afternoon. And so because of the time she was here, she has gotten a second commission and, you know, built her skills, learned amazing things. The workshops that Lisa and Mallory did in exchange for having the studio were public workshops to make clay tiles that then decorated the whole backside of that sculpture that has the rainbow on it. And, and each participant got to make two clay tiles, one to keep and one that was embedded in the sculpture. Okay, go ahead. Okay, this is the tearjerker story. Grace Flott had a one-month residency. And she did so much while she was here. When she was in college, she did a semester abroad in France. And unfortunately, the building she was living in was targeted by a, an arsonist. And she had to jump out of the third-story window. And she had burns on 60% of her body. And her roommate did not survive the jump. And, but her mission since then has been to bring beauty, to show the beauty of our scars. In like Marvel movies and other movies, burn victims are often the evil characters, like the Joker. I think the Joker is, was, I don't remember. I don't watch Marvel movies. And so, but a lot of burn survivors are perceived as, as damaged goods. She's not damaged goods. And she now has this project where she paints portraits of other burn survivors. And while she was here, she met Jessie, who then went off to grad school. Jessie introduced her to a, let's see, what's her name? Mary Farrell, who was the print teacher at Gonzaga. Mary taught Grace how to print by inking her skin and printing her scars onto paper and then making plates from the patterns. And then Grace made these huge curtains all with her scars from her burns. And they were so beautiful. So learning how to turn tragedy into beauty. After she left the Hive, she applied for a grant from the City of Seattle Arts and Culture Hope Corp. And she sent me an email saying that she felt like the Hive residency legitimized her request for funding. And she was awarded $15,000 to continue her burn survivor painting series. And so yay, Grace. And Gwen Pavanka had a six-month residency. And she's the founder of the 33 Artists Market, which you've probably heard of in Spokane. She did the very first one here. And she's like, that was so much fun. I want to keep doing them. And now she's had countless markets. And she still holds one here every fall. That market, the participants don't have to pay a fee to participate when it's here. And it's a leg up for artists in, in their, their work. Let's see, you can keep going. That was some of the artists from 2023 and '24. Elise Hochstaff, she started Spokane Zero Waste. And she does the mended cafes that we have at the library. And that was an idea that she was toying with when she was an Artist in Residence here. And Amalia's the one, Amalia's on the lower left there, or the lower center. She's the one with the really colorful paint spills in Studio C. And she made 46 paintings in the five months that she was here. She was amazing. And go ahead. These were, I didn't get time to put in pictures. But Amy Brooks got a SAGA grant. And she is launching a collection of stories about campfires later this summer. And she worked on that while she was here. Daria Pilram, who's right above her. She was the person who made the Hilliard Creative District happen. And Kelly Hudson, she's over at Studio D. She's working, she created the Spokane Coloring Book. And then some of these people are still to come. And, and then go ahead, next one. Just sent the acceptance letters out. And then I'm done, one more slide. What's next? Any questions? Sorry, that's a long thing. But there's just so many stories here. And it's been like a total pleasure to work here and to steward this program when, I think you said that the, I'm proud to work for the library. I'm so proud of this program, and I'm so proud to work for the library. When we did the pride parade the other day, I always imagine the cheers for the library are louder than everybody tells it. And, and I said to a friend afterwards, I was like, okay, my paycheck's good. But all those cheers were so, so good. So thank you for listening to me. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Help yourself to a hive sticker or a hot pen. But I want the artwork back.
You got it right here. Really, really cool stuff happening here. Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We haven't even signed up for public comments.
All right. Meeting adjourned.